So you never see yourself leaving the city at all?
No, I love New York City.
From city council from districts forty six, please welcome the honorable Mercedes Narcisse. She actually made a career shift from healthcare into city council.
So all those things from nursing is the same skill set that I bring because it's about service. It's about helping others as a government now I can actually fight harder and get more access to real crucial resources for my community. For me to have experience as a mom to realize what I had to go through to find places for my kids. Why not in our community? Why we have to search for things that should be accessible to every child? I have failed in things. I lost two elections before I got elected. Keep on learning, keep on trying. Whatever is how many time you get up and try again.
All right, guys, welcome back to another episode of the Defying All Odds podcast with your host Jesse and my co-host.
Rafa, as always, what's up, guys?
And today we're coming to you live here in Brooklyn, New York. We have a very special guest from a member of from city council from districts forty six. Please welcome the honorable Mercedes Narcisse.
Hi.
Hello, hello.
Hello, everyone.
How's it going?
Nice to be with you, guys.
Same here.
So.
I love the outfit. It's very, very vibrant, especially for the time of weather.
Yeah, it's the fall, so I have to put some little things here.
No, that's good, that's good.
To make it feel like I'm in still in October.
Right, exactly. Especially with the weather, how it's moving now, it's very, you know, I mean, this time of year, this is where it starts to go up and down. So, yeah, it's.
Time has changed is real.
Exactly.
Well, without further ado, I think we should get started. So for those that don't know, the city councilwoman, she actually made a career shift from healthcare into city council, which I think is something that we definitely want to hear more of that story of like what that shift was like for you. Kind of like what led to that from you being an RN, a registered nurse, and going into city council?
Being a registered nurse in the community, not only working in an emergency room at Almer's Hospital, which is a very diverse area in Jackson Hyde, and starting with home care, getting to know people in different level, and being part of my community, being part of different organizations, listening to folks. All the time they asked me, why don't you represent us? And it was in the back of my mind because I had my children to raise out four children, beautiful children in the community, being active community board, president of Forty First Assembly District Democratic Club. So everyone wonder when I'm gonna run. So and I decided to open a business. And then I'm listening from the business world as well. So all those skills I acquired and people asked me to do the work. And then finally, in twenty ten, twenty nine, sorry, twenty, twenty oh nine, there was supposed to be an open seat while I was the president of Forty First Assembly District Democratic Club. And everyone said, if that seat open, it should be you. You should run. And that's how they put this in my head. But don't forget, since I was a kid, five, six years old, my grandmother was an organizer in Haiti. So I've been part of helping people organizing. So that's what probably led me to be in this space to address the issues that matters to all of us.
Okay, so you would say, so, so overall, like through your life, you've kind of been surrounded in this kind of this realm in some way from your earlier childhood and then coming in here as well. Okay. And so you would say, so like, how would you say the nursing and you being a councilwoman now has kind of like, have you been able to kind of like intertwine the two in some ways? Like, has it benefited you being a nurse going into this now?
In, in nursing, we say something like holistic approach.
Okay.
Is that the same thing? Because to put, to make somebody whole, for someone to be whole, your household issue have to be taken care of. You have to have a home, right? To be whole, I cannot be whole without having a home. I'm on the street, that's not whole, right? As a human being, education. If I don't have no opportunity for education for myself and for my children, that's not whole. I'm lacking knowledge. My children lacking knowledge, right? And if I don't have no food to eat, I'm not whole. My body's not whole, right?
Exactly.
If I have mental health, my body's not whole. So all those things from nursing is the same skill set that I bring because it's about service. It's about helping others. It's about creating opportunity. Now, instead of doing it on a lower scale, as a government responsible for education, responsible for some level of housing, responsible for health. So all those things now, I can use the same skill set. Now I can actually fight harder and get more access to real crucial resources for my community.
I see. Things that really matter.
Yeah, and adding on to that, so would you say that you've had like almost like a fiery like spirit in you in the sense that like you were always into advocacy from when you were very little? And then like you go into healthcare and nursing. Nurses are always learning new things from different patients, different patient populations, like not every patient is the same. Would you say that you kind of go through that when you're encountering like all these different topics, education, public safety, like crime, like in your community? Like, how does that kind of intertwine altogether, like with the advocacy?
You just said it because it's the same skill. I'm always fighting.
Right.
Even though when I, let's say, for example, in, in home care, when I go there to visit a patient and then, and I see whatever prescribed for that patient is not the right thing, so I had to advocate for that patient. If that patient don't have any food to eat, I had to advocate for the patient. I have to make sure I find a place where there's pantry, there's things for the patient. It's creating access. And that, now being in the council, it's getting access and resources to bring back to my community. So it's a fun things for me. Every day, I work seven days a week. It doesn't matter to me because it's all about service. And I've been doing that all my lives and I enjoy doing it every day to bring solution to people's problems. And that's the reason my office is the highest constituent services in New York City, in the all fifty one council manic district. Mine is on the top because I believe in it and everyone in my office believe in service. So we able to advocate for, for whatever the services and bring the agency in our community because our office become educational hub. All the agencies have been here for, 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 for the people in my, in my district.
Interesting.
Even half their bus coming in front of my office for people to access it. Wellness Wednesday, now the food pantry, the organization that's one of the big organization campaign against hunger. Now we're starting a wellness program because if your body don't have no food, which is the first basic needs of your body, you cannot function. So that's important. All my school, I was able to advocate for all three years, four years now budget. I was able to allocate it funding for science, for technology, for after school program. Because the children, if they're not doing well, their family's not doing well. And there is no future. We have to create opportunity.
Exactly. And I, I love how you said that. You, we saw through your, through your bio, how, how much you give back to your community and everything, particularly with the youth. Would you say that's kind of like your main priority that you like to focus on overall is the youth or, or is there more to it to that?
It's more to it. Like I say, holistic approach.
Right.
To make someone whole, you have to provide the support of all aspect to make a human being whole. And we're talking about safety, gun violence. That's the first time in my district, we already allocated over three million dollars to have a company like made up different organization to come in our district. Flossy, the one that can put hands on that understand the structure and making sure that we create access for those folks, for the young folks. Because we say idle minds, idle hands, guess what? Is it devil? That's what I'm hearing all the time. But it's really, it's idle and you're not doing anything. You're gonna engage in things that you should not be engaged. So all those things matters to me. That's the first time in our district, we started again to have vocational program. Because after you finish high school, I want to make sure you have something in your hands to start before you can become a doctor's engineer, whatever. The world leads you, a teacher or a nurse, but I want to make sure you're not idols in my community. You have something to do. You have access to something. The program, after school programs, that's the reason I'm so engaged in there. Because sports, statistic proving, if your children involve in sport, it more likely eighty, I think eighty-three percent, if I'm correct, of folks in the corporate world had played some sport. You think as a mom, as a nurse, as a city council, I'm not gonna make sure all my kids have access to all those science, technology that they never seen before is in my district, healthcare. Now we talk about mental health. And now we're talking about veterans, veterans that serve our country led to be hanging by themselves. Now we creating access for that in our office. Every second Tuesday of every month, I have specially, specifically dedicated for veterans. Everyone matters to my community. To make the community whole, I cannot leave anyone behind. Everyone have to be part of the conversation.
I think that's so eloquently said because.
Hundred percent.
There's no, it's kind of like you say, there's no necessarily one pinpoint population you're dealing with. You're dealing with thousands and people from different races, different backgrounds, different socioeconomic statuses. And like you mentioned, it's about equity, right? When you're creating all these different access to opportunities. Now, let me ask you, would you say that being a mom before, like, does that also play a role when like you're mentioning with like all the after school programs? Like, you're thinking like, well, if my children don't have access to this, then how can someone else's children like have access to this? Like, does that also play a role in your decision making?
Most definitely. Experience matter. For me to have experience as a mom, to realize what I had to go through to find places for my kids, I had to travel to take them other places. So why not in our community? Why we have to search for things that should be accessible to every child? So because of that, I'm able to collaborate with organization within my community, give them enough resources that they need financially to make sure they provide the services within our community. Now my kids are playing golf, they are playing tennis, they are playing fences. They, they're playing all kind of sport because I want to open their eyes because we never know the sport. Not only basketball, no, soccer. Now, I was talking about soccer on, in our parks. Now all my parks are being addressed. I'm gonna have a soccer field ever. It costs a lot of money, let's be honest. But they're gonna have a soccer field because I see the population that we're dealing with, a lot of young folks are playing soccer and their parents have to travel miles and they don't have those times. So my job as a council member to listen to folks, to see their needs, for them to ask me, whatever people ask me, I have to think about it. I have to process it and I have to make it to reality because they elected me for a reason, for me to fight for them. So until I get this whole situation, you know, address all issues, address the inequities, I will not be happy and setback.
And I see, I see how a lot of other communities are often, you'll see where some demographics are more focused on or than others. And like you said, your main point is being holistic, making everybody feel valued and everybody feel wanted. You say like a lot of other people, a lot of people often will come to you asking for their needs, right? Other than obviously trying to put that out there, how is it that you try to kind of manage trying to prioritize more people? Well, maybe not prioritize, but rather give everybody a moment where they feel that they're also being valued and not like while you're focusing on one, the other people feel like they're getting undermined?
Not at all because I'm a nurse, holistic approach. Every individual in my district are important to me. They voted for me. They matters to me. So all their needs are being addressed from point A to point B. Because I represent one of the largest district in New York City, starting from Canarsie, Flatland, Georgetown, Bergen Beach, Mill Basin, Mill Island, Marine Park, Garrison Beach, and Chippod Bay. Very diverse. But I'm present in every meetings that I can be present. If I'm not there, my staff there to take the notes, to make sure whatever the situation may be. I'm in constant communication. I call all my principals. I call my, my superintendent. I want to know what's going on in the school. I'm present with the seniors in every senior centers. I can tell you, they have better food, better programs now. Because I used to have a center too, a senior center. So all the experience that I have that over the years, I bring it to life for the people's lives. Because if I'm saying I'm living in the community, people supported my business. They support me as a nurse. They supported me in being engaged, organizing in the community. Now everyone, everyone, I'm present. Some part of my district never used to, to be involved in voting for Democratic Party at all. But now I said, no, even you Republican, I need you. We need to have a conversation because we need together.
Exactly.
We are each other brothers and sisters keepers.
I mean, you're all working in the same space anyway. So it's like you understand maybe a different perspective, some, something that they're not used to hearing and vice versa. Maybe you're not used to hearing from their side and like seeing how you can kind of work together to create solutions, like you mentioned, for your constituents. Now, I want to ask you, in terms of like your background, obviously, right? Like, you came here in your early teens from Haiti and how is that experience also like being an immigrant, especially in New York City where like everyone knows, like the city, this is like the city of immigrants. There's thousands and hundreds of thousands of people from different backgrounds and different cultures that come here, first and second generation. And how has that experience been like for you to kind of like take from that experience of growing up somewhere else and then bringing it now here? Where maybe like in other places, there's not always that community, right? Or there's not always that, that access to opportunity, right?
What I create, coming back from, I mean, coming from Haiti, I learned so much, you know, from my grandmother being an organizer. Let me tell you honestly, my father been here since I, since I was two, three years old. I refused to come here. I didn't want to be here. Because I was, I was having fun with my grandmother, being my grandmother little helper, being in the farm, being doing all the exciting moment, I mean, things that we used to do. But at the end, when my father told me I have to be here, it was difficult, like any immigrant, especially me speaking a different language, you know? Even though I spoke a little English, but not enough, it was difficult. I'm not gonna lie to you from high school, learning a new language, a new environment. But what at the end of the day I was able to do is to take everything that good from my culture to combine whatever good that's here. I take all the bad one out. That's what my grandmother taught me. So now I combine all the good things that I have learned, service, helping others. And it's gonna be difficult moment. It's not gonna be easy in, in, in college. It's gonna be hard. You're still learning. But life is a learning process. That's why I encourage all my folks, all my young folks around me, keep on learning, keep on trying. Because failure is not an opportunity for you to say, okay, I'm done. I finished once. No. Whatever is how many time you get up and try again. I have failed in things. I lost two elections before I got elected.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, life is difficult, but I have learned over the years. And when you, for those that think that this is not immigrant country or city, you're in trouble with yourself. You don't know. You are a loss of identity somewhere because America is creating for everyone that was having struggle that, that feel like something burning over your head for whatever the reason, to find a better place. And that's how responsibility while we here to make it better for the next generation, the next generation to come.
Okay. I see like, I see, like you said, going back to that holistic approach, like you by, you're able to do what you do because you have a team behind you, right? You, you're able to, you're able to accomplish a lot of these, these things and these promises as you make for your community through the collective that you have, right? And, and again, it kind of like you were mentioning, going back to when you were living with your grandmother, you loved to help. You were always just willing to be a helping hand and work with others so that you can find a, a common ground, sort of say, right? And I want to talk a little bit more about your, your time kind of transitioning from Haiti to, to the, to New York, to the States. I like your early life, like how that was necessarily just like growing up here and kind of really transitioning a little bit. Other than just like, apart from the language, but just like how maybe, maybe you were like viewed as being as like the minority immigrant at the time?
Yeah, as a metaphor, back in the days, they used to call, you know, us name Haitian and stuff like that. But for me, it was quite difficult for people to call me name. First of all, when I get somewhere, I assess everything and I try to do my best. I'm always a friendly person. No matter what language, what's the problem? I always want to know, what's your problem? Because I don't do anything to you. And, and eventually, again, organizing. I started organizing the Haitian that we have around and I started calling all the Haitians, you know, even those that pretend to be Jamaican at time or Trinidadian because they're scared that somebody gonna beat them up. I remember my brother.
Really?
Was in the school before me until then. And what I did is organizing and make it easier. So we started having our club active and communicating with each other. And next things you know, I started joining the other club, the Trinidadian club, the Jamaican club. I was part of every club. Now I've become the club person. Let's talk. Let's have a conversation. So we started organizing together and I started teaching them about history. I say, we all come probably dropped somewhere, you know, in Jamaica, in Haiti. So we all together. And I started giving the Jamaicans some history that used to bother us. I said, do you know about Bookman? A lot of them did not. And I'm like, you don't know about Bookman? Bookman was Jamaican, came from Haiti to go to, I mean, came from Jamaica to go to Haiti to help with the freedom. So that's my ancestor. I'm Jamaican somehow. Who knows? I'm the descendant of Bookman. You don't know that? So why you fighting? And then I would ask question like this for the Canadian. I would ask them about Henry Kristoff. Do you know Henry Kristoff? Apparently, thank God, I was raised with my grandmother with a lot of history. I was a history book to my people. There's no reason to fight. So let's get it together and organize and then later, you know, we can get, do things together and it will be amazing together.
I mean, similar to like, I mean, I mean, again, I mean, as everybody knows, we're Dominican, right? And there is.
Espanola.
Exactly. Espanola, there's definitely a history between Haitians and Dominicans.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, you being Haitian, right? How would you, how do you feel like we, that could be amended a little bit better with the times that it is now?
Communication and understanding your history. Because at one point it was the island of Espanola and Haiti was to one point with more kind of cloud, with more resources, was taking care of Dominican Republic. Now it just started the reverse, but it's a lot of drama. But I think the more we know about who we are, where we came from, the easier it can be. But some folks refuse to look in the mirror, to face history, to understand if we don't stop this, we don't talk about history, we're gonna repeat it again. So if it's not Haiti, let's say Haiti, Haiti rise up again and Dominican over here, it would be the same thing. So we don't have to repeat that cycle as human being on the planet. What we have done to be here, some folks are gone early. So we are here for a purpose, for a reason. The more we can utilize our space, our time to do better for each other, the better climate, the better our earth will be, the better we'll be as people and not killing each other for no reason.
Exactly. Raise your mic a little bit more.
This, yeah, yo, yeah.
This better? Yeah, I think it's probably like drop a little bit. There you go, yeah. And this, no, no, raise it up and then tighten it.
Is that fun?
But no, tighten up so it can stay up like that.
It might be here, this one.
There you go.
Yeah, right there.
You're good. All right, you were saying?
Yeah. So I was gonna say, one thing that you hit on that I really wanted to really talk about more was the idea of like learning your history. Like, I think that a lot of times we tend to get lost in that. Like, for instance, at Columbia University, there's a plaque. When you walk by one of the main freshman dorms and which is like where the main dining hall is, and it says like, this land used to belong to the Lenape people. And most people, when they go do a tour at Columbia, they may not know that, right? And that plaque is there for you to know that like, yeah, by the way, this was land that belonged to someone else before. Now we're, you're learning your history. Now you're knowing like this institution, yes, it's a great institution. It has a lot of history. But these, these people were obviously here before. So it's like you mentioned, there's a lot of different history that goes around. And I think that Columbia does a good job at least acknowledging that by having that plaque there. Because how many times do people probably walk around different parts of New York City not knowing what, what did this, where did this land come from, right? And it's like, yeah, we do our best to learn in, in high school and in middle school with like their history teachers. But a lot of people just tend to forget and not do their research. So I think that that's a very good point that you bring up as well.
We need together.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, unity and communication togetherness.
Yes.
Again, I think that's, that's the main gist of kind of what you try to preach.
Exactly.
As being a councilwoman and overall. And like, one thing I wanted to push off, because one of the things that we noticed looking through your bio, and I found it very fascinating, was about the jaywalking.
Yes.
How that you were one of the first people to kind of like push that law through.
Yes.
To ban, to ban.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, sorry, to ban it, to, to ban that and not be, I found that very interesting just because like particularly just that law in itself. I mean, nowadays, like it's, it's one of those, it's kind of one of those like things that you see every day that people, like they do it every day, right? But technically, we're, we're doing something illegal and, and but at the same time, it's not even being enforced, you know? I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, I was gonna add on to that, like even before we get into just like the idea of like the concept, you see people cross the street all the time, right? And would you say that like part of that push was that maybe sometimes other people being treated unfairly because of it? Like, you know, how many times realistically would an NYPD officer or any type of law enforcement stop someone for jaywalking in New York City? And but like not just stop them, but cite them. You really wouldn't see it, right? It's like one of those laws that exists, but it's not enforced. So like the push that you bring on, was it more out of like, you know, maybe some people are being targeted and certain populations are being targeted with this, and then they're getting cited. And now they're having to go through courts and pay fines and go through all this unnecessary drama had if this wasn't there in the first place?
That you hit the nails. It's just discrimination.
Okay.
We have data to prove it. And the first, I, when I came aware of it, like when I'm hearing that some folks are getting ticketed for jaywalking, I said, are you serious? Jaywalking is a problem? I never get that. Jaywalking is a problem. I'm doing it every day. I mean, we all do. Come in Manhattan. And they said, yes.
One of the first things you learn as a kid.
I never knew it was a problem. So I said, okay, that's interesting. So if people are being, I thought that it would never be, right? But I remember one day I was in a high school, one of our new captain came and then we were just gonna come and talk about, you know, jaywalking. And I, I mean, like I said, I said, it was a problem. And I remember one of the captains said that, oh, we're gonna start trying to give tickets whenever after high school, the kids are crossing in a village. And I said, excuse me, hold it right, one second. You're gonna give tickets to kids at South Shore High School, a bunch of black kids. And I remember I used to do summer program back, way back in South Shore High School where it was all, you know, Caucasian. We all were going to Breckin back in the days. We never have anybody stopping us. So why would you do that today? I said, no, it's not acceptable. And by the time I became a council member, I look at the data, I realized all the tickets summons are giving in the black and brown communities. I said, wow, whoa, whoa, hold it right there. By the time I finished with, I said, no, that have to be off the book. Because no, if you go around this city, majority of folks you relax, they will tell you they don't know that jaywalking was a problem.
That's true.
So therefore, if you're using it to target and criminalize people, the same group of, we live in New York City together. And you were able to do that to one, you know, to specific group?
Doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make no sense. Because it was usual, it was normal for everybody else. It should be normal for a black and brown person.
And on then the idea of like when you might have proponents that might say that, that will be like, your opponents will say, oh, but it's a safety issue. But in reality is, is like most people in New York City, they know when it's safe to cross the street.
Of course, you wanna die.
Like, like, if, if the light is green and you see there's cars coming, obviously, you know, someone's nine point nine out of ten is not gonna cross the street, right?
You're gonna stop.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, you have like the concern now, you have pedestrians with the bikes, like with the city bike program being expanded. And you have, you know, truck drivers that are double parked and like some people can't, the car won't see. But like we all know, it's all about awareness, right? Like.
Education. That's why my bill is attached with education.
Exactly, like if.
Because I don't want people to, to get hurt.
It's a, it's a city that never sleeps. We are always moving. We are a, a non-stopping engine that is constantly on, on the move. And I feel like, I mean, people like to give a lot of flag to New Yorkers, how we're so aggressive and things like that. But we just, we're great people. We just want to get to our place. We don't, we don't got time for, we don't got time for. But nine out of ten, if you stop anybody, they're willing to listen. They're willing to listen to be heard and to help. I mean, you hear so many, I mean, I mean, you got, the news in general gets a lot of flag for always just putting like bad stuff that is happening. You know, they don't put a lot of positivity out there on the news. And I feel like that shouldn't be the case, honestly. News should be news in general, again, holistic, right?
Exactly.
And you, you can hear so many stories of, of good people in the subways and stuff like that, doing nice things for people or situations. I remember years ago, I remember I saw something on news, there was a kid that was graduating, right? And there was a delay on the train and he was gonna miss his graduation. And I remember everybody in the cart basically made him like a makeshift graduation.
I think I saw.
In the subway because he was gonna miss it. So it's like things like that, I feel like more people should know about, right? Rather than just the typical, you know, oh, there was a shooting and think, wow, those things are important.
But listen, in my district alone, I can tell you, we're doing amazing things. But you're gonna see the news going after, you know, anything that's negative, that's showing. Because guess what? Unfortunately, that's what people want.
That's what sells.
That's what sells. Unfortunately, I wish we can reset it because now we start having some, what I do, I challenge some reporters. And then when they do something positive, I come out of my way and say, thank you for covering this. Because there's a lot of good things that we need to cover because we are a society where we need to be uplifted like everyone else. We need positive things to be coming to, you know, to our eyes for our mental health, we're talking about.
Right.
We need more of that. So I, for me, whatever I can do, that's why I'm present for everything in my community. The kids, the girls start doing something, the boys start doing something, the seniors doing something. I'm present all over in the churches. I make about six, seven churches to go greet. I make about six, seven churches to go greet people, talk to them. If there is an issue, I want to know. I come taking my notes to make sure we address issues together because we need to uplift one another and take care of one another.
And that's the best way to put it because like, I look back at when Rafael and I first started this podcast. We immediately knew there's too much negativity in this world.
Yeah.
There's, you go and open Google, you open the news, whatever, whatever you're like getting your news from, even social media, it's all negativity. People talking bad about each other, insults. You're like, why not spread some positivity? Like, we've heard your story and we we realized that like, this is something that doesn't get publicized enough. That's the beauty of having such an independent project like this, where we're able to push out the positivity and the motivation and the adversities that people go through.
It's so easy to see like, because again, I mean, I am myself, because I and Jesse knows, like, a lot of, you know, people in the political world definitely got a lot of flack, right? For because they just think, I mean, obviously, people have their motives and agendas, but it's never all bad, you know? And I think it's just as important to hear both sides. Like, I've always said, there's two sides of every story, you know? We don't drive on a one-way street. It's usually two ways, that's how it goes. So I think it's just important to hear both point of views, both sides, whether you like it or not, right? Because you're gonna learn more through that. And again, as you, that's how that's how you grow and find compromise and and find that the the common ground. That common ground that's gonna help everybody get uplifted into the day, so.
I am so happy for you, Jesse, Rafael, Luis, that putting this together.
Thank you.
Let's stay positive and that's what we do. Because if we don't push our agenda forward and we let all the negative things coming in, then you never see the positive. And people are gonna be inspired by your work, by staying focused. And sometimes you will feel like it's not the most popular things because people are not getting excited. But I think it's a matter of time, keep on pushing it forward and you're gonna have the group of society that want to push it and share it. So I would advise all your audience to keep on sharing and let people know that, you know, this is amazing things that you're doing. You want to see the world in a positive, the the glass half full. And then to make sure people know there is a better day for those young folks and young men that's out there.
I want to ask you one more thing too, also to add to that is, is again, while yes, you are a councilwoman here in this district and everything like that. Um, you mentioned you just came from, what was it again, Arizona, right?
Yes.
Exactly, so you're you're doing other outreach elsewhere, outside the city, outside the state. Like, what are some things that you feel um that maybe you would like to do more of? Um, to bring more of that awareness that you are doing here in this community to other parts? Maybe not just in the city, but in maybe other states as well?
Clean streets. So when I travel, I I I have my chance to go and and deal with other elected officials, sometimes I don't. And I'm in medical as well, as you can see, there are a lot of conference, once a nurse, always a nurse. So I will travel to go to conference too because I'm not in a classroom, I'm not hands-on. So education, continuing education is important to me. But whenever I go, I'm taking all the positive things that they see they're doing. I remember about two years ago, I was somewhere, should I, I don't want to prompt my other other country, other city, because I love my New York City.
Right.
But I I had to take pictures of how they manage their garbage. And I did not see any kind of pets running around, you know? I mean, pests is pet, we need pet, we don't need pest. Therefore, I was seeing them around, you don't see that, they they have right containers and stuff like that. So I took a lot of picture, I brought back and I can see now we're making a move toward that.
Yes.
And I said, um, I testified in um in city council on the floor to say that garbage should be part of our lives. Um, DOT should create space where we can have enough bin container to make sure we keep our garbage tight. So when they pick up, we don't have all those things dripping out of our bags. So I see the mayor is stepping up forward before his exits um in in city hall. He's putting that, pushing that out and I hope we can follow through. I know it's difficult for change, but I would like to see a cleaner city. And I'm putting my hands on to make sure that I I used to do a lot of cleaning. By the way, I used to have my broom going by the train station, going all over, organizing to clean my street all the time, all the time. And right now, as a council member, whenever I go for cleanup, I'm my hands on. I'm not gonna have, the other day, we had about over two hundred students from Central University, from KU that came to help us clean our shore. I was there, Canarsie Pier, which I love, I grew up around there. So they were there, they were like thinking, they thought that I came for a photo app. I said, no, I come to clean too.
Give me some gloves, I'm in there.
Yeah, let's go, let's go. So, yeah, so I like to have, um, because we not, we have to um address some the climate change and environment as much as we can. And then garbage is part of it too.
Yeah.
How we recycle, how we did.
New York City is is is, I think they reported like, we're like the number one dirty city in in the country.
And I cannot hold that. I, you know, I love clean things, so you know it's a problem for me. Every time I see people and then while I'm there, I'm gonna say, all young folks, older folks, whatever their age, but I see a lot of young people doing it. Let's be honest. They would be like, wind the window down and through whatever I did have. And I'd be like, what the, uh, how could you do that? You're dirty man. You know, sometimes I I drive next to them, I say, can you not do that? This is my backyard, this is my living room. You throwing garbage in my living room? And they look at me, I say, yeah. But I will see people coming with their bag, putting it, I said, can you pick it up, please? Because it's garbage, you cannot do that.
You gotta be kind.
Yeah, so um my message is clear, to keep New York City clean because that's our city. That's our backyard, that's our living room. So every time you have something in your hand, in the car, you can fold it and put it on the side. And when you get home, put it in the garbage, just put it, you know, accordingly, appropriately. It's every one of us responsible for a clean city, not only the sanitation department. We all have to do our part to keep a city clean because we very dense is is a it's a lot of people here, our population every day, you know? We're talking about million and million of folks functioning in a city like this, come on now. We have to do our part, everyone responsible to do our part.
Well, and that's like the way it is because like, we're the future, but we could only do so much. It's it's like a collective effort, so everyone has to put their best foot forward.
We're talking about over eight million people leaving in a little tiny place.
Yes.
So we all. We have to clean up.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's it's super, I mean, again, it's the number one dense city, world, so.
Yeah.
I mean.
I don't know, Mexico, Mexico too, Mexico City is very dense too. But we have to do our part.
Yes.
We, New York City, we love the city and not even one New Yorker, you would say to ask them if they love New York City, they will tell you, no. They have a little issue, but me, I have my issue, but I love New York City.
Yeah, I mean, again, born and raised here.
Yeah.
And I mean, uh, there's nothing like it and.
No.
The other cities and the few cities that have been around the country, um, like, like I remember, I I mentioned before, but I went to San Francisco one time for for just to explore it. I love it, super nice, super clean. Um, but again, every time I look around different cities, I was like, it's still not New York. It's just like.
It's not New York.
Not, it just can't be, New York can't be compared.
No.
It's not. It really can't.
Each city can be beautiful, but not New York City.
Yeah, yeah, like people, people want to try to be, but people, at the end of the day, people model themselves through New York first. Like, that's how it is. Again, there is issues.
We're the capital of the world.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So now, one last thing that I wanted to ask was, was there ever a moment where in all your careers that you've had? Nursing, city council, even and when you were a business owner, that you just like thought about quitting or you just thought about like, can I really go do this? Am I, am I gonna really like succeed? And then you said to yourself, no, I can, and you ended up doing it anywhere?
Yeah, I am um, I have that little things in my head, like I don't know if my grandmother put it in there. Whenever that I try something that is difficult moment, I will say, oh, it's difficult, oh, oh. But I have that other side of me that say, yes, you can, yes, you can. It's just like the Obama way, yes, you can. And I had to remind myself every day, I have that responsibility because I'm benefiting from being part of this great, amazing world, amazing city. I don't have nothing to complain about. Um, it's just to help, put my hands into it, including the cleaning, including whatever that, whatever it takes to make New York City the best place. Um, we call it capital of the world and I have a chance to be in the capital of the world, what should I complain about? The problems mean looking for solution. Every problem have a solution and I'm willing to look for solutions every day that I get up. And I praise God, say, to God be the glory, let's work harder and make it better for each other and for next generation to come.
Very well said.
And uh, do you, just out of curiosity, do you have any aspirations to like go further than this? Um, outside of like councilwoman, like is there anything else? Are you trying to go to the next level, sort of say?
Let me tell you, it's been a privilege, every day, everyone asks me, what's the next step? And people keep asking me that you cannot quit on us. I wish just start, we have an election coming up, as you know, um, starting from the twenty fifth of October. Um, I, it it been a nice ride for me to concentrate and serve the people of New York City, not only my district. And I have people from all over New York City. That's a, that's a blessing for me to get that, for people to tell me that they're waiting for me for the next phase. I'm not um giving up on that. I love serving and that capacity allow me to do a lot more than being in my personal business. So I will explore it, but I don't know where, wherever God lead me, the people of New York City lead me, or my district lead me. Because my people in in my district are very determined for me to go further. And I have the passion, compassion to serve and whatever I can do to make New York City better, I will do it. It's a calling for me to serve the people of New York City. They help me out.
So you never see yourself leaving the city at all?
No, I love New York City. I go a week out, I'm back.
Like, some people like to go to Jersey, Connecticut, you wouldn't even do that?
No, I was upstate one point for summer, not to say, not to live there. To go visit.
Yes, yes.
I go, no, I used to have a home there to hang out for the summer with the kids. And every time, it's just only three days, four days, I can't, I had to come back to my city, to my home.
It gets boring, it gets boring.
The city has everything, why would you want to leave?
You know, you love everywhere. I don't, I'm not knocking London, Barcelona. I visit a lot, oh please. Let me tell you something, after three, four days, five days, I'm out.
Time to go back to New York City.
I have to go back home.
The few times I would like, like when I was younger, I would stay over at my aunt's house in New Jersey, we'll say like a week. And same thing, like, it's nice for a few two threes, two, three days. But after that third day, I'm like, it's too quiet, I'm tired, you know, these birds chirping, I need some, give me a horn, let me hear one horn at least one time, you know? Give me one of those fans driving by with the music blasting so I can at least feel something, you know?
I love, I love the beat, I love the different culture, the diverse culture, I love the diverse food.
Yes.
You want to eat Indian food? You want to eat Greek food? This is only New York City, at any time, any city you go, tell me a city that you go, that you can get whatever you want anytime.
Honestly.
None.
Can't necessarily say we're the same where I live now, but like, that's what I always miss about when being in New York City was like, the opportunity of like doing whatever you want past nine o'clock, because I feel like in most towns, at least in upstate New York, it's like, after nine PM, ten PM, everything's asleep and everything's dead, there's nothing there. You're just like, what am I supposed to do now? Like, just stay at home?
I'm alive.
Exactly.
Exactly.
At least here, I grew up across the street from your Presbyterian hospital and like, I'd hear the ambulance sirens and that would help me go to sleep every night. I move up there and all I hear is crickets and bird noises and I'm like, how do I fall asleep today? It's not the same, I need the ambulance siren to help me go to sleep again.
Well, you still, you still have some part in the city that you can hear the, you can hear the birds and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, you can.
Especially in town Brooklyn. We're not by the water. We, we have our issue, transportation desert, all those things, but we still love.
Anyone that lives close to Central Park and they could hear all the birds from Central Park.
Yes, what's Central Park?
Yeah.
Um, Botanical Garden. Brooklyn, Brooklyn, you're gonna get plenty of birds singing in your ears and stuff like that. We still have the suburban and urban together, combined together.
Yes.
That's the beauty of New York City.
It is true, it's true. Like, when you look at all through, like all the boroughs in the city.
Yes.
Like, there is a little bit of everything um for for everyone in every spot. Like, you just have to give it a chance to check it out.
That's right.
And I would say, and I come in firsthand, uh, myself, like, again, I was born and raised in Washington Heights and moved to the Bronx. Um, I'm often hardly ever in Brooklyn, like my, most of my friends will, like, when I tell them I'm coming over here, they're shocked because they just know like because just the travel, whether it's on train or car, the traffic or just the delays on the train, it's it's a journey.
You're telling me.
When you, when you compare it to us as, we can get anything right across the corner, you know? So, but I, but I like that.
Listen, little B, I call my colleagues from the Bronx, little B, we the big B.
You're the big B, ah, okay, where the B X?
Amanda Faris, the majority leader, we'll tell her, because I tell her, no, no, you the small B, we the big B.
We're the big B, okay. I mean, you got, I mean, you guys definitely had to come up first, that is for sure. Where, I feel like particularly like going into the Bronx.
No, you're coming up too.
We are definitely, and where where I live, I live more in the South Bronx and that's definitely been changing tremendously uh for for the last ten, fifteen years now. But like, but again, there's still a lot of, there's still beauty in every, in every part.
Every borough is beautiful.
Yeah, like you just gotta give it a chance.
You only have Bronx Zoo, I don't have Bronx Zoo.
Yeah, I mean, you got the Barclays, like, I mean, you got, you got, you got Coney Island, so that's something, you got some of that.
Far Rockaway.
Far Rockaway, I guess, yeah, so people got to go through you, you know?
To get to Far Rockaway.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So, yeah, that's, it's, it's really great, again, the city is amazing and and honestly, uh, this this was fun.
A lot of fun. Again, it's always the city that never sleeps anyway, so.
That's true. Work hard, do your best, stay out of trouble and be consistent, persistent, you can make it in New York City.